Okay, I'm gonna start the May 13th, 2025 Auburn Main Planning Board Meeting. I'll start with Agenda Item Number One. Roll call to my left. Bob Hayes.
Really, it's coming.
Ed Baer.
Bilal Hussein.
Paul Jacques.
Riley Bergeron.
Darren Finnegan.
Tim DeRoche.
Maureen Hopkins.
Yungel Adolph.
Okay, with Stacy LeBlanc's absence, I am elevating Bilal Hussein to a full voting member. Item number two is the meeting minutes from the April 8th meeting. Everybody had a chance to look through those? Any changes we need or amendments?
I'd move that maybe we, where they were just distributed tonight, maybe move for acceptance at the next meeting?
Is that fair?
They were available online. That's where I printed mine out. That's where I reviewed them and printed them.
Okay. Well, I will seek a motion then to either approve or not approve, but a motion either way.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Thank you, Tim. You didn't have any remarks, so I figured I could vote.
Sorry. Okay, item number three is a public hearing and site plan review of Brickyard Commons. Do I need to reopen it first, or?
Yes.
As a public hearing and site plan review? Okay. So with that, I'll need a motion to reopen the public hearing and site plan review for Brickyard Commons?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
I'd like to take a moment regarding item three, Brickyard Commons. Due to the nature of my employment and the knowledge I have of the commodities transloaded next door to the property, I'm going to recuse myself from discussion and voting on this topic as I don't believe I'll be able to do it without bias.
Do we have to accept that, or just? And it's been done a little differently in the past.
If Tim is interested in recusing himself, then it's his call to recuse himself.
That's what I thought.
With his recusal, ideally you would appoint another associate.
Yeah, so Tim, you'll join the public for a minute?
Yep, I'll join the audience until the next item.
With that, I am gonna elevate Ed Baer to full voting member, just for item three. And then I'll give it over to staff.
So this is the Brickyard Commons project on Brickyard Circle. We just add a site walk on the site where we looked at all the property lines and where the development would be, and the grades, and the drainage, and the proximity to the Brook and other adjacent properties. The applicant was there, and members of the planning board, and members of the public, and people were able to ask, and the planning board was able to ask questions, which I feel were answered. Nothing has been changed on your site plan since the last meeting. And I believe this was postponed primarily to have that site walk. As for interruptions, is there anything else I should note?
Our motions remain the same with this, the conditions that Natalie provided in your memo. So I think short of that, it's probably for the board to turn it over to the applicant for any additional comments or presentation.
Are there any questions for staff, or if we need to have the developer come back up to the podium, or?
I have a couple of questions, one for staff and one for the developer as well. So my question for staff, I'm looking at the notes that were just handed around. It was some comment from Rihanna LaRose that references the Shoreland Overlay District. And I was wondering if staff could comment on whether or not the Shoreland Overlay is applicable to the areas that are within 75 feet of Taylor Brook.
I'm assuming, this is in reference to the 75 feet versus the 25 feet, is that the section you're referencing?
Yeah.
Right. So I think we touched briefly upon this last time. Staffs have the opinion that those portions of land abutting the section of Taylor Brook are in the general development district. It's noted in the ordinance, and those standards are less. The only thing in the general development district automatically goes down to 25 feet. You're impervious area, structures, any improvements, all can be up within 25 feet of that natural resource. That's only when you're in the general development district area. So when there's other provisions of the ordinance, whether it's referencing driveways, structures that have different setbacks and whatnot, those most certainly would apply if you were not in a general development district.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff specifically?
I'd like staff to go to our ordinance on page 83 of 216.
Natalie, you pulling that up?
Yeah.
Bob, is there a section number with that?
I have page, and I guess.
You might and I might not, so what section is that?
What I'm looking for is the reading of what T-5.1 is purpose and intent.
I'm looking over his shoulder, I think it's section 550.
Yep. Oh, sure, sure. The downtown traditional center zone is characterized by medium to large-sized buildings in a compact urban environment that generates an active street life. There is interplay between the public realm of the busy street and sidewalk, and the public realm of residential stoops, commercial storefronts, and gallery building fronts. The increased building widths form a more solid and compact street wall pattern, generating and energized traditional downtown.
Maybe on the next page, what are some of the key features?
Key features include vibrant and active interaction between public and private realms, larger buildings, front facade detailing, bay windows, balconies, street trees, more urban density.
Thank you.
This may be a question more for the applicant, but you both were at the site visit, and I asked Mr. Gatto about the phasing of this project, and your memo is what I was remembering. It provides, your memo does, in parking and access management standards, with 96 units, the proposed development is required to have, provide a minimum of 120 spaces. The applicant proposes 193 spaces, including 168 to be constructed in Phase 1. And I'm wondering why we have to construct 168 in Phase 1, which I understand is half of 96, which is 48?
Probably a question more for the applicant than staff.
I think we confused the issue, is what I think happened. Is that we were proposing to construct the project in two phases. Phase 1 being the first four buildings, Phase 2 being the five through eight. And we also planned on constructing 168 parking spaces to serve those, but we had a second phase, we've got our first phase of parking and a second phase of parking. First phase would bring us to 168, the second phase would bring us to 193 that we said we would build in the future if needed. So I think the staff report and my letter may have confused that. I don't have my letter right here, but I think we may have confused that. But the idea is to, if you can put the site plan up, is to build all of the parking with the first four buildings. That one doesn't work, because it doesn't show the phasing. So we need the civils plan set. Down to the bottom. Civil plan set.
What page?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at my, keep going. Might be that one, no, yeah, right there, that one right there. So the idea is to build this section of buildings and all of the parking here in Phase 1, except these two, and these 10. And those would be the second phase of parking if the tenants have more vehicles than what the code suggests. And if you go to the next. The idea is to build all the parking here, except for these 10 spaces, built in the second phase if we need them. So 168 total to serve the eight buildings, but we may add 22, if I got the numbers right, in the future if we need additional parking.
And I'm still not understanding why you have to build twice as many parking spaces as you have dwelling units. Why don't you wait until you build the dwelling units to create that additional impervious area?
The tenant, or the applicant believes that we're going to need two spaces per unit. And as a compromise with staff, instead of building only 120, we, at the last time it was approved, went down to 1.6, or whatever it was, parking spaces per unit, because that was what we thought would be the minimum we could live with. But we have done the stormwater calculations for the entire buildout of the parking lot. So the code calls for 120. We are proposing 168, or a ratio of 1.75 per unit. And if necessary, going to 193, which would be two spaces per unit.
I understand all of that. My question is simpler. Why are you building virtually all of the parking spaces for both phases in the first phase, as opposed to phasing in the parking as you phase in the development?
And what I just tried to explain is we talked about building the buildings in two phases, and we talked about building the parking lot in two phases. So it got confusing, because we were talking about 168 in Phase 1, when we're actually, again, because we were talking about doing the parking in two steps. So we're gonna do 168, but we're only gonna build the parking for buildings 1 through 4, except the additional spaces. And then we're gonna move into building the parking in 5 through 8. And at that point, we'll have the parking done with 168 spaces to serve the two phases.
So that parking in Phase 1, you have space for like 96 slots? But you're only building 86 of them, or something, is that what you said, or 84 of them?
I don't think I counted the numbers.
My staff report was incorrect. I must have misunderstood the phasing plan. But this parking for Phase 1 will only be in Phase 1, and parking for Phase 2 buildings.
Roughly half the lot, the parking.
Yes, half and half.
Right, roughly half the parking. We're building all the parking shown there, except for the 12 spaces. In those 12 spaces, it costs a lot more money to come back and build those 12 spaces later, but we think we're gonna need them based on market conditions. One of the projects that we just recently built on Court Street is at 1.8 spaces per unit, and they need more spaces. Everybody thought that we were gonna have less cars, more people on bikes, more people walking. That's not what we're seeing, and that's not what the market's telling the developers. They're saying they need two. It's almost like a retail that wants five spaces for retail, but the code only requires three. So we're trying to build out parking that the client needs when these eight buildings at a minimum are full. And that is 1.75 per unit, your code is 1.25 per unit.
I have seen that up at the 555 Court Street building. There's a lot of visitors with, like grandparents, living up there, and then the grandchildren coming to visit when I'm up there in the afternoons, or on Sunday, Sundays, or Saturdays, or something like that. I haven't ever seen it full, but I've seen there's quite a bit of parking up there, especially when you get towards 7, 8 o'clock at night, there's, everybody's there. And then you have the motorcycle and the car for one tenant. It's busy.
Yes.
And that's only one demographic, it's not nearly all, you know, retired people or something.
But just to follow up, I think you said on site that all the groundwork was gonna be prepared for the additional parking, so all the grading for the second phase would be done early on, so the heavy equipment?
I tried to explain that once we get Phase 1 site work done, while those buildings are being done, we're gonna start working on the site work and preparing the groundwork in Phase 2. But the groundwork for the 12 spaces won't be completed in that Phase 1. It'll be completed at a future date. They might do the two spaces in the corner, but the 10 spaces out along the edge, they're likely not gonna get built until Phase 2 is necessary. Think you still have?
In the, allowed in this zone, are four-story structures, residential. Why not have gone to four-story to allow lesser footprint as buildings? You could get the same number of apartments and six structures, as opposed to the eight with three-story?
Well, I'm a site guy, not a building guy, but it is my understanding that once you go over three stories, you need an elevator, and your fire code and building code are different, and the buildings become much more expensive.
And I think I agree with you, I think that is a.
That's, it's a kind of a code issue that blocks it off.
I bring that up for two reasons. One, we're putting, we're clearing this site, as brought up earlier, only allowing 25 feet really to the stream. Second, I think we've talked about some of this in the past. It is too bad that we don't have more elevators, because if we, and I'm of that age where I'm beginning to think I need to be on one level. Reason to be on one level is so you don't have the stairs. And I think that with the number of apartments that we have, are three-story, we don't have a lot of level first floor available. And for older people, it kind of prevents them from maybe considering a second or even a third. So that's part of it. And so I think for those two reasons. One, we're using up a lot of space with structure, footprint-wise, and a lot more green space could be protected if it was six structures, as opposed to eight. And I think, again, I understand that it's more costly, but I think in the long run, again, to allow some of our elderly population to be able to get into an apartment with elevator, it may free up some of our existing housing stock for younger families that would rather be in a true home.
Yeah, I won't, I mean, I don't know that I can answer again, because for building purposes, the client has decided to go with the three-story, no elevators, and that's what we're proposing here tonight. We have made all first floor levels at grade, no steps, so that people can get into the first floor levels. They're all handicap accessible on first floor level of every building.
I believe that required a waiver?
I don't recall that.
Because I think there's a requirement for two feet above the average grade?
On a city streetscape, I believe there is a requirement for having steps up to it, yes.
So to follow up what I asked initially, in that same section, now that I have uncovered the number, but a few pages beyond the actual 5.1 reading, and it's at page 103 of 216. There is a requirement, it says all projects shall provide a community impact and needs analysis with review and approval from the city council or its designated, which I assume the designated would be, you know, planning staff. So I guess, Mike, I'd ask you to provide in your submittals, where is that addressed?
This is the first I've heard of that.
What section are you referring to, Bob?
And I don't have the code.
It's in the code, but just beyond the matrix for uses within the form-based codes. There are certain five requirements, one of which says all projects shall provide a community impact and needs analysis with review and approval from the city council or designated.
So that's only on, so if you're looking at this use table, it says number five, so it's only things that have the number five next to it? So public safety services, government services, detention facilities, municipal or public utilities and communication facilities? So that number is not next to multifamily, so that's not required for this project?
Okay, I see you corrected, but I'm disappointed that where the reading of the intent and purpose is so clear that this particular development in this area doesn't seem to fit.
I have a question. So I don't, pardon my ignorance, I don't know where this came from, but was this from a public comment, this map? Or was this from, provided by you?
That was provided by me to staff with response to public input on spill prevention, or spill things, and that was just an aerial photo that shows spill numbers that were, only some of the spill numbers that were in the vicinity of safe handling, as well as some that were in the vicinity of the former Morn, Dennis Brickyard, sorry. So when I, when I looked at the spills, it referred to numbers. So I provided that map along with a submittal in response to those 100 or so spills that were emailed at one point to city staff and copied to me.
And so I can see from the map, there's a lot that are around that Brickyard Lane area where the site development is gonna happen? So is that a concern for the development?
There are none on the site that we're developing. There are 100 or so on the safe handling site that were labeled from 2002, I'm going from memory here, and I can pull the details. From 2002 to 2016, there was about 100 that were actually on the safe handling site. And then there were half a dozen in the area of the spring in Dennis Brickyard in 1991 and 1996, which were not brought up by the public, but were something that I brought up in response to water quality in the stream and Crystal Springs.
And I'm glad you brought up the stream, because that was something that the public had a concern about. So once we developed this area, of course, we talked about all of the requirements that you mentioned about parking. I mean, is there some sort of preemptive measure that the development is making to prevent any sort of, you know, excess or any impact on the, you know, surrounding spring and surrounding environment that the development will be on?
We, we are not proposing any impact to groundwater resources or taking water from the ground. If we had wells here, we would have, we would have submitted a hydrogeological assessment to make sure the water that was clear. But we're extending public water and sewer to this location. So the only thing that we can do for the parking and other things is to meet the state stormwater rules. And we're proposing two different stormwater features, which will collect all the water on the paved area, or 95, a minimum of 95% of the water that touches the paved area will go into one or two stormwater treatment areas. One is at the access road on the way in, the crosshatched area, the dots and stuff. Yeah, that's a filter bed where the water, surface water comes onto the top of the filter bed, goes down through a filter medium, is collected in the bottom. And by the time it's collected in the bottom, it's clean, according to the state stormwater rules. And we have a liner underneath that, a 10-milliner underneath that, that we collect that water, and then it's piped to a discharge pipe towards the stream. And then the development up above, the pond up in the middle of the buildings, there's a little crosshatched area there, down at the bottom, yeah, right there. That is a focal point system that treats stormwater quality. Yeah, sorry, the engineer here, Michael Bonds, treats stormwater quality. And then there is a pond after that. Once the treated water comes out of that, it is detained to hold it back to meet the stormwater, to 10 and 25-year storm events, release to Taylor Brook. So once it's released to Taylor Brook, at the outfall down by the Brook, in theory, we have clean water going into the Brook. And again, we have a liner under that system. That liner is there to prevent groundwater coming up into the bed area and taking away the volume or taking away, you know, it's to keep the groundwater separated if we're near the groundwater. The soils test indicate that we'll be above the groundwater table. But it keeps any groundwater from coming in, or anything from coming out, until it gets to the Brook. So we're treating the water that comes on the surface of the pavement through these systems, through sediment forbays, through thumps in the catch basins. through sediment forbays, uh, through, um, uh, sumps in the catch basins. We're catching all of the stuff that needs to be caught and treating it, uh, best management practices in accordance with the state stormwater rules. There's a large submittal in our March, in our March submittal, there's a large stormwater submittal, which Mike Bonds can go through the details if we have to, but, uh, we are doing what we have to do. And we're treating ninety, we're required to treat 95%. I think I have those numbers, just give me a second here. Ninety-five percent of impervious and we're treating more than that. And, uh, eighty percent of landscaped area, we're treating more than the eighty percent. That's the only reason we could get the stormwater permits that we got. This, the site was already approved for stormwater, um, with the city delegated review, um, you know. So that's what we're doing. We're not impacting the groundwater. Um, and in theory, we are doing what treatment the state is requiring us to do.
Can I ask, in, in light of the multiple chemical spills reported to the DEP on adjacent properties, did Summit Engineering or any of your consultants perform any soil analysis to see if there are any hazardous substances on site?
We have done no analysis that I'm aware of on site. But again, because we're not going into the groundwater, we, we didn't, we didn't actually know about this, all the spills at Savage until, uh, we got the information from one of the abutters. Um, and we went through, I went through every one of those spills and did a chat. I don't know if that was submitted or not, but I did a chat of the hundred spills. Um, but, uh, no, we did not do anything because again, we're not drawing from the groundwater. You know, it is what it is.
But you are moving dirt on the site?
What's that?
You will be removing dirt from the site?
We will be removing dirt and filling and cutting and like we normally do, but we're higher in elevation. Uh, I think you were on the sidewalk. We're higher on the elevation than the lay-down yard. In theory, it's either going to be a surface flow off from the Savage site, which would go in the ravine at the end of the project. If you walk the, along the, the ravine that was along the, uh, what's the lumberyard? Hammond property line, uh, is where that discharge would be surfaced and groundwater is likely to be similar. We found ledge, as I noted when we were on site. And the groundwater can go through ledge, but it's, it's something that takes a long time to go through ledge if it does. So we weren't concerned with the contamination.
The DEP document that you provided contained a recommendation to incorporate a hundred-foot buffer of undisturbed vegetation adjacent to Taylor Brook to protect water quality, maintain natural inputs of woody debris, and maintain suitable habitat conditions for fish and other aquatic life. It was a recommendation by the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Can you explain why you've chosen not to, uh, follow the, um, inland fishery and wildlife recommendation to keep that buffer?
The, actually, the analyst in the permit went on to, uh, to argue that that wasn't necessary. So we gave her some of the background data she used, but she, she, uh, she, before she issued the permit, towards the end of that discussion, she gives a dialogue about why that wasn't necessary. And we, we didn't, uh, we, we did, you know, we applied for it. We got the permits to be able to do what we're doing.
And the recommendation for a 30-millimeter impermeable liner, I think you said you're using 10, when the DEP Bureau of Water Quality recommended 30 to protect the groundwater. Is there a reason you decided to go with 10 instead of 30?
Uh, and again, the analyst said that a 30, a 10 would be sufficient in her permit, but again, she's not giving a stormwater permit. Under the rules, um, the stormwater rules, they use a 10, um, mill liner, uh, again, to separate anything from underneath coming up into the bed. A 30-mill, 30-mill liner is typically used for landfills where you're trying to protect the materials in the landfill from leaching down into the groundwater. So it's an extra cost that DEP indicated wasn't necessary. And the city, the last time around, and I understand they reviewed it again, um, didn't require us to upgrade from 10-mill, 10-mills, so that's why we proposed a 10-mill.
Just another kind of a comment. I think some of the materials, I didn't realize that, it seems obvious, but didn't realize that Brickyard Circle is one-way.
Brickyard Circle, uh, years ago, I got on a project approved at Dennis Brickyard, um, years ago, eighties, uh, and it was one-way. And at some point, uh, I think it changed to two-way. I'm not exactly sure why. And during the review the last time, I think the city staff said that we're going to make it one-way. So Brickyard Circle should be one-way, entering from the north, past the spring and out the end where our driveway is proposed.
Yes, I was interested, on the site today, there's a sign facing the entryway from the southerly side as a weight limit for the bridge. And I thought, if it's one-way, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I, I, there's a stop sign too, somebody said. I didn't, I didn't notice it, but there's a stop sign somewhere along the line. You know, I can't, I can't judge, but it is my understanding that Brickyard Circle should be one-way from the north to the south. And that's what our traffic study reported, and that's what the traffic study measured site distance from. And that's why the traffic study proposed the left-turn lane off of Washington Street northbound to be directly across from the north end of Brickyard Circle, because there was a wider island there for the left-turn lane and the movements to go directly onto the.
And I guess, as I was looking at the site and walking out to that intersection, I'm still bothered by the crossover out of, uh, Brickyard Circle southbound to cross to go north. It, you know, at minimum, there's some foliage that's going to have to be removed because if you're at that stop sign to go across, I did not have the, the site vision or site distance that I want to make that crossover.
The site distance was measured by the traffic engineer in the traffic study and it met the requirements under DOT requirements. Does it need more clearing? It may. Um, again, I didn't go out that way. I turned right and went down and turned, uh, in one of the other things. But again, people will have to do it. But according to the traffic study, all intersections, including that one, um, met the site distance requirements.
Which is usually based on the posted speed limit?
Most of the time, it's posted speed limit. Uh, I don't recall the study now because it was a while ago when I read that one. But, uh, sometimes there is a arterial at risk and it's a different standard. But whatever the standard that applies to that section of road, it was, it met the site distance.
I just mentioned speed limit because I think exiting Auburn downhill, I'm quite sure, uh, that speed limit posted is not, uh, very restrictive. It doesn't stop the, the heavier, faster flow.
Yeah. We, I'm happy to answer more questions. We did have a presentation that Michael would like to do. And I guess I have some things to say, which I can do now, I can do after public comment, whatever you want. I guess it's up to you, which way you want to go.
Do you guys want to just hear the comments before public comment?
I think if we could do, uh, we have a presentation on the shoreline zoning rules, which may help understand, the public understand. We, we'd like to do, Michael, I'd like to have Michael do a, a presentation. And I just wanted to say that we did give you a couple of area maps in this last submittal. You should have saw an area map and aerial photograph and a GIS to try to give you a better sense of the neighborhood and distances and stuff. So I'll let, uh, Michael Bonds, uh, go through his slide presentation. And I'll come up and answer any questions and we go to the public.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Um, I can click and then I can also operate this, I think. I need to go to the, is that on now? I know how it works. Uh, Michael Barnes with Mainland Development Consultants. I'm a civil engineer, uh, on the engineering team that, uh, designed the project. And, um, I just wanted to walk through some of the lines, setbacks, the districts, as they pertain to shoreline zone and the floodplain overlay districts, uh, just to clarify for people, for the board, for the public. So all of my slides are on our engineered stamped plans. And I've just highlighted some of the lines because there's so much going on on the plans that it can be hard to see, uh, what's relevant. So this slide shows the mean high water line in blue. Uh, that's a definable line in the field that surveyors are trained on how to, how to determine where that is. And, uh, went out and surveyed the site and determined the, the average, or the, sorry, the normal high water line. And as it relates to the shoreline zone overlay, um, everything's based off of that. And as staff talked about previously, the, the definition of that shoreline overlay district is within 75 feet of that blue line. So, uh, I have it. I don't know how to use it. There we go. Uh, so the orange line is thus the 75-foot offset of that, uh, normal high water line and is the shoreline overlay district, uh, where the regulations, uh, in that ordinance apply. Um, it's not a setback or a, a buffer or anything like that. It's a district that has a set of ordinances. And one of those ordinances is a structure setback, which is a setback to buildings. Um, the definition of a structure in the ordinance is a little vague in some places, but, um, I believe it, uh, would apply to retaining walls, possibly, um, parking areas, driveways, stuff like that. But for sure, according to the structure definition, it's homes, porches, garages, things like that. And then that's this 25-foot structure setback, uh, which is what our project is staying outside of. And that is unique to the general development districts, which T5 dot one is, is one of. So we've got some zoomed-in images of buildings. Um, so building eight is 81 feet away from the normal high water line, well outside of the structure setback. Uh, there is a retaining wall that's inside the shoreline overlay district and outside of the setback. And then there's some grading, which, um, we could, could go inside of the setback. It's not a structure, but in this case, it's, it's outside of the structure setback. Uh, here we have a stormwater outfall. Uh, it's a pipe that's underground. And then there's a little bit of riprap at the end of the pipe right here. Um, and so that portion of pipe and, uh, and riprap or, or rocks, uh, is inside of the structure setback. Neither of those are structures, so they're allowed in that setback. And, uh, that is treated water as, as Mike talked about. Uh, the only thing I would add to what Mike said is, um, that it's not theoretically clean water. It's, it is clean water. It's in practice, clean water. There's a lot of established, uh, design parameters and research that's gone into how to treat stormwater. Um, so all of this water coming through this pipe has been treated. It's been detained and slowed down. And it's, uh, been brought back to pre-development levels so that there's no, there's no change in the quality of water or the flow of water coming out of the site, pre versus post. Building four, again, a little bit of the building is inside of the shoreline zone overlay, so the ordinances apply, but it's all well outside of the structure setback. Building two is entirely out of the shoreline zoning overlay, uh, and well outside of the structure setback. And this driveway that's coming in, uh, is inside the shoreline zone overlay, uh, outside of the structure setback. This is a retaining wall that is 26 feet from the normal high water line, uh, and outside the 25-foot setback. And from here, oh, and also there's another, uh, stormwater outfall from this filter pond. Again, discharging clean water that discharges outside of the shoreline overlay district. Uh, next slides show the floodplain and floodway. Um, you can see in one area, they're the same line. That's why the blue terminates into the red. Uh, so the floodway is where the, the floodwaters are moving. And the floodplain is, you know, uh, slower-moving water or not-moving water during a flooding event. And again, I just have some slides to zoom in to show a little bit clearer that, uh, our buildings and retaining walls are outside of the floodplain. All of our grading is, for the most part, outside of the floodplain. Again, we have a storm drain or stormwater, uh, overflow pipe that goes into the floodway just to discharge a little bit of water, but there's no fill in the floodplain or floodway. There's no effect on the ability of the Brook to, uh, pass through a flood event. And again, building four, outside of the floodplain, outside of the floodway, no fill in the floodplain. Building two, same thing. All of our grading, proposed contours is outside the floodplain. And then the driveway is where we have some impacts in the floodplain. We have, uh, a floodplain of elevation 204 in this area. So everything, uh, in, on the existing site that's below elevation 204 is part of the floodplain. And we are filling a limited area, widening the existing driveway. We have some cut that goes along with that, uh, at the inflow and outflow of the new culvert that's replacing the existing culvert. Uh, we're also upsizing the culvert to allow more water to pass through. Uh, and the net, uh, fill inside the floodplain is just in this area. And it's about 100 cubic feet of fill, um, which is de minimis, essentially, a very small amount of, of additional fill that doesn't impact the ability of the system to, to handle a flood. That is, uh, my presentation.
Uh, I have a question about the filter pond.
Yeah.
What, what exactly does that filter? I'm just, that's, this is the first time we've like really talked about it since I've been on the board.
Um, I mean, there's a whole bunch of, well, the, the most important is just general sedimentation. So, um, there's a, there's a forbay and then a, there's many different types of filter ponds. We use two, um, stormwater treatment devices on the site. Uh, so it captures any sedimentation, which would be erosion or just general dirt. Um, and then it cleans out through biological systems, um, including soil filter. And then sometimes, uh, um, well, in this case, we don't have a wet pond, so it's not really relevant. Uh, so it's, it's going through a filter media that any particulates, uh, the, really the main one that the state looks at is phosphorus as like, uh, good indicator for all contaminants. Um, I'm not an expert in terms of like the biological interaction between soil and to, to know exactly what contaminants it filters, but it, it cleans them. And they look at phosphorus as the one that really dictates, uh, how clean the water is. But it's established nationwide. All these best management practices for stormwater treatment are, are administered by state DEPs, um, and they're consistent across the country, really.
That's similar to what you'd have at your house with a leach field?
No, leach field would be for wastewater for, um, septic.
Oh, even worse, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's very contaminated water, uh, where you have a septic tank and a leach field. This is stormwater runoff. So I guess to answer your question, um, it would be, in this case, oils from vehicles, uh, trash is a big one, and then general erosion. Um, so, you know, anything that might leak out of the bottom of a vehicle, which would be primarily oil, gasoline, if you had like a spill or something. That's the kind of thing that it's treating. It's stormwater runoff, so stuff that's on the pavement during the first inch of a storm wa, of a storm event, that they call it the first flush, takes all of those contaminants into, into the treatment area. Mm-hmm, go ahead.
So a couple of slides back, um,
So, a couple slides back, I can let you know which one it was.
I'm not sure how to go back. Oh, wait, I can go backwards.
Okay, go forward. Okay, yeah, like here?
Yeah.
Building 4, I can see how close it is to the floodplain at its maximum or however the calculation was, but is there an elevation between the bottom of Building 4 and that line, that blue line?
Yeah.
Is there any sort of elevation or?
Oh, I can see it.
So, this slide isn't showing finished floor elevations. I don't know off the top of my head what the finished floor elevation is, but we can see a proposed 216 and 217. This would be a 215 contour. So, this, and this is all ADA accessible and flat. You can see the 2% there. So, this Building 4 would be at elevation 215, which is 11 feet above the floodplain, which is at 204. And you can see that, too, by all these contours coming down the slope here. So, this is an existing steep slope, as you can see with the gray contours, and then a new, even steeper slope up to the building pad, which is flat.
And the wavy line you said earlier was the cut line, right?
Yes, the limits of tree cutting are this wavy.
Okay. I had another, I don't remember. I'm pretty sure it was back where it shows Building 8, specifically, that would be the one. Was that, on our site walk, was that the one that was like the high point that was going to be cut down? Do you remember, Mike?
Yes.
We were kind of nearing the apex, and then we went up it and then made, headed back right after that.
Right, we walked along the shoreline, and I stopped where the belly is and the contours. Can you show them that belly, Mike, in the middle of the parking lot? See the contours dipping down towards, right there? So, that, we walked through that belly, and I said, "The retaining wall's here."
Yeah.
And then we went up over the hill, and the higher point is down at the bottom of this slide, okay, with that highest land that we walked across. But ham and lumber property line is off to the side.
Can you read those contour lines? I can't quite see them from here, like from, like we just did on Building 4.
Oh, yeah, sure. So, this is 227.
Yeah.
So, this finished floor building is about 227. The floodplain in this area is at 205, goes up as you go upstream. So, we are 22 feet above the floodplain.
And then that's a retaining wall, then?
Yeah.
Right here. That's quite a drop, yeah.
Happy to address any other questions.
Are we good? Okay, we're, okay, then we'll move on to public comment, then, right? Okay, so I need a motion?
Make a motion to open public comment.
A second.
All those in favor? Okay. Public comment, if anybody'd like to address the board, please come up, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carol Lane, and I'm from 30 Albanio Street in Auburn, right near this. This is one of my neighbors from the brook. Just a little levity, but in all seriousness, I'm here to share my concerns regarding the proposed development and its potential impact on water quality, habitat restoration, and responsible planning by the City of Auburn. Let's look at impact on restoration efforts. Thanks to NOAA grant, both the City of Auburn and NOAA are currently invested millions of dollars of grant, invested and actively working to restore fish passage, say that 10 times fast, and aquatic habitat along Taylor Brook, including a dam removal, which is upstream of this parcel. Since 2017, members of the City of Auburn have been working diligently to apply for and finally get this grant. So, this development could undermine those efforts. Increased runoff and sedimentation, disrupting adjacent wetland habitats, compromising the natural erosion control provided by the existing woods and wetlands, all of which will impact fish passage, a major component of the grant, and the water quality. The current status of Taylor Brook, it's rated as a Class B river and stream by the main DEP. Its designation has been maintained for over 20 years, so quite a history. The status has been preserved thanks to low surrounding development, strong city shoreland ordinances in the past, and improved drainage systems and culverts installed by the City of Auburn. So, right now, the City of Auburn is working to improve water quality in Taylor Brook. Risks from the proposed development, as I mentioned before, there's disturbing the soil and the impervious surfaces, which admittedly, they're not going to be treating all of the stormwater runoff. There's a percentage that won't be handled, which is what they just said. So, that significantly increases unfiltered runoff into the brook. Removal of the vegetation buffer will allow contaminants, including those from Washington Street and the parking lots, to flow directly into the brook. Impervious surfaces will prevent groundwater absorption, increase erosion, and decrease water quality, which will directly impact safe fish passage and aquatic health of the brook. As part of the broader Washington Street redevelopment, per the city's comprehensive plan, other parcels of land will no doubt become available for development. These areas may be far more suitable for housing development, from an environmental perspective at least. We should evaluate how this project fits within the larger redevelopment vision of Auburn, and whether it aligns with Auburn's current work under the NOAA grant and its long-term environmental and planning goals. Protecting Taylor Brook is not just about preserving a waterway. It's about making responsible, forward-thinking choices that respect the decades of work already invested by Auburn. Let's ensure that developments support and don't threaten Auburn's environmental progress.
Good evening. Renee Cody, 54 Dawes Avenue. I'd like to refer you to the comments, the list of incidents at Savage Safe Handling, and the photograph that I submitted to the planning department. This is on pages 253 to 258 in your materials packet. I understand there's going to be a lot of movement of pages in the PDF that may be hard to follow. Since that initial submission on April 30th, I've been in touch with the Bureau of Remediation and Waste Management in an effort to find out more about the documentation that's shown in the files, in the photograph. There's a photograph of a pile of, yes, there, thank you. I found out that some of that documentation concerns an environmental covenant that was entered into in 2010 between Savage Safe Handling and the DEP. This environmental covenant and the five-year review of compliance letter, the latest one dated November 2020 from Savage, those are found on pages 282 to 281 of the PDF, so the last pages of the file. As part of this covenant, Savage affirms, among other things, that the premises are not used for residential, their premises are not used for residential purposes, that municipal zoning has not changed, that no construction or ground disturbance has occurred, and that no alterations have occurred in the groundwater, surface water, or water table other than those occurring naturally. This covenant pertains to the northeast corner of those premises, where pentachlorophenol, PCP, dioxin, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons are present. Although the terms of this covenant stop the property line, the movement of chemicals does not. There's a slight downward pitch from the contaminated site through the applicant's property down to Taylor Brook. Without a hydrogeological survey, it's unknown whether these chemicals will migrate when the organic barrier provided by the vegetation on-site is removed. Before this development is permitted, a hydrogeological survey should be performed, and with the proximity of Savage and Safe Handling, I'm surprised this has not come up before. On page 266 of the file, there's a May 5 letter from Savage Company Headquarters. The letter states that the April public comments showed a lack of understanding of company practices, and that the comments included misstatements. What misstatements? The letter doesn't say. It just reads like a company public relations piece. The list of 100 spill incidents and the existence of this environmental covenant are factual, and current compliance with federal and state regulations is not a guarantee that spills will not happen in the future. I note that the documentation of any incidents that may have happened from 2017 on has not been scanned, and this would require more in-person searching to find out. It's within the planning board's purview to request a hydrogeological survey. You can also decide that placing a multi-unit residential development adjacent to the site of numerous chemical spills and under an environmental covenant is not a suitable use of the property. And finally, unrelated to that, I would just like to reiterate the comments that I raised at the last meeting about the sidewalk on Brickyard Circle, which I referred to as the sidewalk to nowhere. Walkability has become a buzzword. It sounds good, fewer cars on the road, but the fact is that Auburn is highly unlikely to develop its urban density to the point of anyone walking on Washington Street South. Looking at the condition of Brickyard Circle itself, and considering the recent culvert failures, road closures, and potholes that we've seen citywide, I repeat that it makes no sense to allow construction of a sidewalk on a dilapidated street as part of the bonding agreement, should this development be permitted, simply because the developers in the aggregate business. So, I respectfully submit that you really consider doing a hydrogeological survey on this property before we go any further with it. Thank you for your time.
I've lived along that brook. I own the entire brook waterline from Washington, from Brickyard Circle to Bennett Avenue, a little over half a mile. Lived there for 68 and a half years. I've seen a lot of water. I've seen the water go over Washington Street. I've seen the covet that, when we took the adjacent to their driveway flooded. They talked about they're going to do a 100-year plan. 100 year, in the last 68 years, I've seen the water go over that road several times. So, I'm not sure about a 100-year plan upon retention and whatever is going to work. Secondly, Brickyard Circle is a death trap getting in and out of there. Bob, you made a comment on going across that stop sign, going straight across. If you don't understand, when you go up to that stop sign and look right down the southbound lane, before you pull across it, you're taking a life and a chance in your own hands, because I've probably seen 200 times in my lifetime a car coming the wrong way from Pioneer Plastics and Rodman Road. You look at the traffic concession around Rodman Road, just down the road, all the traffic improvements have been done just in the last couple of years. We hear that the DOT or whatever, did DOT, did the study, a traffic study? How many years ago was that? This project first got started, what, four years ago? How long does it take for traffic patterns to change? They do change in four years. They change in four weeks. And now, we're going to be looking at this project being pushed ahead again based on old data. I'd like to touch on safe handling. I was maintenance manager there from 1999 to 2001. There was a lot of spills. There is no way that you're going to stop a 10,000-gallon hydrogen peroxide railroad car from catastrophically to spilling it all out. Where's it going to go? You're going to have, what? How many apartments there? How many kids going to be there? How many grandchildren? How many grandparents going to be there? When that, and it will occur, it's just a matter of time. Hundreds and hundreds of spills we've had there. The state can't even keep up with the documentation. Renee just touched upon that. 2017 to now is, what, eight years? And they haven't, they haven't, they've got to stack a pile of violations and incidences that they haven't even recorded yet. Well, I hope it's not your grandparents, not your children, not your wives, not your husbands, that are going to try and cross that highway. Bob, you touched on it. People who go down that road from the top of that hill, motorcycles get there running start, they do a buck twenty before they're going across that stop sign area you pointed out, all the time. I hear it all the time. I've seen it. There's been no studies, recent studies, and like I've said, this stuff has changed in the last three or four years. This needs to be researched. This is not a good area to put a bunch of people in. They're going to pull out of that driveway, which is going to have a retaining wall there to build the driveway in the first place, which the water's going to go right over it. Or with that retaining wall, where's that wall going to go? On my property? It's going to be my problem? Let's take a step back here and look at these things. Let's do the study, the geological studies. Let's see where the traffic pattern is today, not from four or five years ago, and then give a permit to do this today. Look at the traffic lights they put up there at the end of Rodman Road and Poland Road. Two years ago, a guy got beheaded, right there, decapitated, right in front of Ness Oil, that turnaround. Tractor trailer truck was going in there for fuel. His flattened truck trailer was sticking out in the road. Some kid come down there, didn't quite pay attention, lost his head literally over it. This is not, this project doesn't, has to fart in a church smell test. Come on, common sense. This is not a good place to be putting all these people. That's all I got to say. I just, I just can't wait to see what happens next.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. I want to reiterate and reinforce what several prior speakers have said. I also want to refer back very briefly to the comments that I made at the prior hearing regarding the NRPA permit, which was issued for this project, but which is really extremely weak and needs to be reinforced with municipal action. In that permit, the DEP, its geological unit, was going to require the 30-millimeter membrane that's been referred to. The developer said, "It's going to cost too much, and therefore, we only want to put in a 10-millimeter membrane." The DEP just caved and said, "Okay, 10 millimeters is fine," without any additional facts to support that. The explanation has been offered here this evening that the 30-millimeter may be required usually only where landfills are involved and materials are potentially flowing down into the groundwater rather than being forced upward by hydrostatic pressure. We're dealing here potentially with some very toxic materials, as Mr. LaRose has just alluded to, and therefore, the 30-millimeter membrane standard should not have been removed by DEP and should be put in place as a condition of any approval that this body may grant. Secondly, the DEP said, you can read from the report, they were practically pleading with the developer to put less buildings on this site. The developer said, "I can't put less buildings in order to make the amount of money that I feel I need to make from this project." DEP did not object to that, and plus, there are these eight buildings, some of which are very close to the property line and bordering the residential neighborhood up on Bennett Avenue in that area. The other aspect is that... The other aspect is that the DEP recognized that there would likely be the generation of onsite pollutants from stormwater runoff, from salt, potentially oil spillages from municipal sources or from local vehicles, just tenants' vehicles, occasional little small oil spill of that sort. But they said, "We don't find any problem with this because it'll run into Taylor Brook and will be diluted, and two-tenths of a mile further downstream, it will be diluted further because it'll run into the Andrus Goggin River." That's not the way you establish good governmental environmental protection policy by saying, "Let it run off, it'll get dissolved and diluted." The real big problem here is not inherent in this parcel, even though this is a difficult site with a lot of convolutions and a lot of different soil types. The biggest problem is that potentially generated by the Safe Handling Savage parcel immediately southerly, and the real core issue is that nobody knows what the scope of that problem is. Nobody has done a groundwater analysis of the soils either on that parcel, to our knowledge, or certainly not on the Gendron parcel that's the subject of this application. Ms. Hopkins raised a question to that effect, and the answer was, "No, we have not done any kind of groundwater analysis. We didn't cause the problem in effect," and that's true, "but they are the inheritors of the problem as the owners of the parcel that sought to be developed, which lies between Safe Handling and Taylor Brook with a downward gradient, which in some parts of that parcel, as those of you who took the site walk could see, is a pretty steep downward grade. And the soils are not absorptive soils in that area. Summit Engineering did a series of 15 test pits, but they just did an analysis of the type of soil and not the groundwater quality or the content of any pollutants in the groundwater." Most all of these soils are similar in that they're alluvial soils from glacial outflow with bedrock under most of the area at varying depths down. There was one test pit that went all the way down to 16-plus feet with no bedrock. Others were much closer to the surface, but all of them pitch, the ground and the bedrock pitches toward Taylor Brook. So what really needs to be done here is an extensive, comprehensive hydrogeological study, as has been suggested by other speakers, in order to find out what the real quality of the soil under this parcel is before any permits are granted.
Good evening. Rhiana LaRose. I live at 164 Bennett Ave. I forwarded a couple of things to Natalie. I did find documentation of aquifers on this parcel. We kept hearing that they didn't exist, or we thought they existed, but they weren't sure where. I found a publication that dates back to the '90s. Most recently was in 1999. It's publication 99-22, and it states that there is indeed an aquifer of state significance, a very large one, right in the middle of this parcel. The publication was done by Daniel Locke and Craig Neal. Yep. What I would like to know, which we would need some more time, is to get ahold of that publication. We keep hearing about, again, no aquifer or possible ground contamination. Going to the soil maps, can you bring those up too? So anyway, I think we should investigate that. Yeah, that's fine. There's a better one. But if you look on the development itself, most of the soil that is outlined in here is SCA, which is scantic silt. It's basically a very, very fine soil. It's a soil of state significance. It is one of the most poorly draining soils, if you notice from your site walk today. It's very much like clay, but the difference is that scantic silt is very nutrient-based, and so a lot of soils of prime farmland that we have in Auburn is actually revolved around that type of soil. Because it's so nutrient-rich, a lot of those trees are able to root very deeply, and vegetation is able to establish itself. That's extremely important because the soil doesn't drain. It could be sometimes days or weeks, very, very poorly draining. But right now, with having that vegetative buffer in there, those trees use transpiration, basically their roots go down like very deep, you know, even nine-plus feet deep. And they hold on to toxins. They suck up the water, they bring it into the vegetation, and they kind of break it down or store it within the tree. So once these trees and that vegetation's gone, that scantic silt is not going to have the ability to uptake water, which is going to cause more flooding possibly, more erosion. You're also going to lose that natural buffer where they're taking up petrochemicals, nitrates, nitrogen. We talk about phosphorus, yes, but everybody knows about nitrogen too, if you're familiar with Lake Auburn, and we have blooms. My understanding is, if we can go to this development site? Yeah. So these two catch basins that we just talked a little bit about, my understanding is that they, their intent is obviously to grab ahold of groundwater, filter it, but like he said, it doesn't filter everything. There is some stuff in the packet where I think it talks about, it's only like, it's only going to filter 45%, I think, of the nitrogen, for example, that is being sent across the soil, especially from Washington Street. I think there was like 55% when it talks about phosphorus, nitrogen, I think petrochemicals were on there, but remember, it's not 100%. So no matter what, it's, because it's not 100%, it's going to increase more contamination in the brook than what is there existing. So just to make that point, I'd like to really, if you have time after, I asked the planning board to bring that information up on the screen, because I can't remember what the percentages are, but again, it's not 100%. And it's also only going to catch in that area. Like we said, there's downfalls with big, big, steep slopes, so that is also going to go into the brook. So if you look on the Auburn city, we did stuff for the Ag Zone and all this, but you can go on the USGS too. If you look where that scantic silt was, that SCA, the soils, yeah, that one, where that SCA is, and I can point, if you actually look, the soils of state significant farmland, like prime farmland soil, is also pretty much on top of that. It's because it's good soil. Once you disturb that buffer or that soil, and if that soil is indeed nine or 15 feet deep and you disturb it, everything that's in that soil is going to leach right across the Taylor Brook. So because it poorly drains, it's naturally taking up the chemicals. Now, if it's not there, then the water is going to flow much faster across the parking lots, much faster into the brook.
Ms. LaRose, your time's up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Thank you for your service.
Absolutely. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing none, I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor. So with that, this would be a chance for us to respond to the comments and questions from the public. Would anybody like to start?
I don't have it. I actually might have it from last month, but do you have the date of that that traffic study was conducted?
See if I can find that. Unless the developer...
So, and also, while you're looking, in relation to that, and Bob's, your observation from today, something I learned when we were going over 555 Court Street was that I voted against something because I disagreed with the traffic study, and I was advised later that that is not, not allowed to do what I was allowed to do, was ask for a review of the traffic study or a new traffic study, but you can't vote against the results of a traffic study. So if that addresses some of the concerns that we heard earlier, we have to vote with what the traffic study says. We can ask for a review of it, but it's not, it's not something we can disagree with. Do you have that date? Sorry.
Yes, it's May 5, 2022.
Thanks.
I have a question relating to that. Is May 5, 2022, is it that particular day, or was there a range? Like that they conducted the study over a period of time or something like that? I think that'll affect the numbers as well.
That's when it was published.
Yeah, they're usually pretty comprehensive over the, over the different time spans. They do night and day and weekend and weekdays and...
Developer can speak more on it if you'd like to welcome him back to the podium.
One of the numbers provided that they look at is crash data. It'll, and it'll come across eventually, but it's for the years 2019, 2020, 2021.
Yeah, I saw the crash data, but I was looking for like the peak trip or... how they came to the peak hour trip measurement. It says it in here somewhere.
I'd probably defer the applicant, but my understanding and looking at it, I mean, I don't know that, they're using the IT manual out there to come up with that, with that calculation. There isn't counts, as far as what the projection is. I'm looking to see if they did count some existing. Oh, on your page two, yes. So that blue graph there shows what is projected based upon the IT manual. It's not necessarily what's existing out there, but it's based upon what this type of use would generate. So I think, are you asking what exists out there now for trips?
No, I was, I was actually trying to help answer the previous question about what the range of time that the, that data was, was created from.
So crash data, you know, 2019 to 2021, and then from there, they use IT manuals calculation as shown on that page out there where they make assumptions based upon the number of type of developments that occurs, and they back into that as to what exists and how many. If I recall correctly, we're not triggering a traffic permit out there. It was 100 trips in a peak hour, but it was a recommendation, and I'm going to use the wrong term here, it's not warrant, but that's the reason for that left turn lane coming in off of Washington Street North. It was seen as though that that would be necessary to improve a situation out there that doesn't exist when you're trying to access the site from traffic going northbound.
And although this application, this part of the application was resubmitted from 2022, we actually had a meeting with the developers and their traffic engineer right at the beginning of this application that was resubmitted, where we talked about that turning lane and like when it, like when it would be warranted on the site based on the amount of units. So this has all been looked at again by that same traffic engineer during this recent process as well, and that's how they determined that they'd want to do it before the school year begins for any children that might be in this complex.
In fact, the two conditions seen in Natalie's memo recommended as part of the motion, those were actually from the traffic engineer.
Can I go for a second for, with regard to the turning? I know it's for left turning, right uphill, if you will, or pretty much. Just having turned right out of there today, seems like there could warrant a right turn lane as well to get up to speed first because they are coming, I mean, it's a 45 there, We can't really talk about people speeding because that's beyond our control in there. That is a reality of it, certainly. But if that was a consideration, because people do have the option to turn right and then make a left further up to then get back onto the northbound lane.
It is 45 on Washington Street South, and back to like earlier comments that were made about site distance, it does look like 425 feet is required coming off that intersection, and that's the, that they were meeting it for.
And they're not going to go up to 65 and stuff like that because that's exceeding the...
It's not posted at 65 or what other people are driving on the road.
I just want to make an observation. I think that we, we can certainly find that we're not convinced by what the applicant submits for traffic information, but when that's all we have, I don't think that we have much choice but to accept it. And one of the things that I had hoped on, hoped for in the last month was that perhaps people with concerns about this project would come in with some data, with some expert opinion or whatever, whether it be traffic or whether it be hydrogeologic issues, because otherwise, I think we're, we're left being only able to second guess, and I don't think that's our position, the information that we're being provided.
Well, first, I'm going to thank staff for responding to questions that I called in and had asked for some further information. And unfortunately, I guess this is a history behind recent zoning that I've been involved in, and maybe I should recuse myself as well, but there is a history to this, this area. And actually, going back to the company, the, the existing comprehensive plan that's often referenced being 2020, it's, it's, actually, that's a 2010 update. So it's only three chapters were actually, I think, addressed, maybe four, but three essentially. This particular parcel that we're talking about originally was industrial, and the boundary between the industrial and the general business was the brook. I think through, my understanding, through the, the updates, which go back to 2021, that's when it was really being discussed and formulated, there was a change to, and there's a whole story too, with respect to form-based planning. It, you know, if you're going to come up with a new zoning in an air... You know, if you're going to come up with a new zoning in an area, unfortunately, they just seemed to grab something that was existing and place it, didn't even change the name or the purpose. So anyway, this particular parcel originally was industrial, part of the general business. The, when it was first approved and sent up to the, from the planning board to the council, this particular parcel was not included in the, the initial review by the council. They had to go back from the council back to the planning board. And then it was described as being a, an oversight in the, the mapping from what it was from 20, yeah, 2010. And so anyway, to me, I hate to say it, but it was almost like spot zoning because this was the same area time when a project was really propelling the, the change in the ordinance.
I just have a.
And I guess I'll just say it, I do understand we have to abide by what's actually on the books today, but I guess I'll, I'll say it now, I think that because we are now in a true comprehensive planning effort, it may be the time to re-review this because I think it was, the, the updates were done during COVID. We were just coming out of COVID when it went through a very quick process. At the state level, and I think it's still true, the, we don't have much of a state planning office. You know, there's a lot of communities across.
Bo, we're straying a little bit from, I, we have what we have right now.
Yep.
And I, I understand what you're talking about, but.
Well, thank you for allowing me to at least express it.
It's not irrelevant, but it's not really something we can do anything about right now, so.
But as a follow-up, it is, I think, pertinent because we have discussed it. If we're going to move ahead with a motion, I will be asking that we truly go down the list of findings and address each one by vote.
I have a couple of comments. I think first, I am surprised that we don't have a hydrogeological study. Now that we know there's evidence of hundreds of spills on immediately adjacent parcels, I think it's naive of us to think that the chemicals are going to stop at the property line and not traverse over onto this parcel. And we are talking about disturbing the soil and having, you know, 100 people, 200 people living there. And I think it is within our purview to review the health and safety impacts of potential soil contamination on people who might be living there. My other comments go to water quality. And while I understand that DEP did issue a permit, that is not determinative as far as our ordinances go. And I understand that the DEP is not requiring the 100-foot buffer vegetation recommended by the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. But one of the things that didn't come up in the applicant's response that is in the DEP permit is that one of the reasons they didn't want to maintain that buffer was because they would not be able to make enough money developing this parcel if they had to maintain that vegetative buffer. The same economic argument was made about not incorporating the 30-millimeter impermeable liner as was reducing the number of buildings and increasing the number of stories. So the developer's argument to a number of these issues is economic. We won't make enough money if we can't do exactly what we want. And it seems like we're sacrificing environmental, water quality and potential health and safety for the developer's monetary gain. And in my opinion, the applicant has not met all of the subdivision standards, particularly section 60-13591, that the project will not result in undue water pollution.
Can we go to the GIS graphic that we just recently submitted? There have been a number of comments about the groundwater at Savage and the contaminations at Savage going downhill from Savage to our property. When we walked the site today, the railroad track was much lower and so was the Savage Yad much lower. And we walked the site and there were ledge outcrops in certain areas and our test bits indicate there's ledge. I want the GIS graphic from the submittal that we just submitted, the supplemental submittal. We gave you, in this most recent submittal, we gave you a GIS graphic that shows contours of the area and setbacks. It's on my stick if you need it.
Sorry. I'm a little slow on this thing.
I'm sorry, I can't read that. The contamination recently noted.
Microphone. Sorry.
The contamination that was recently noted is in this general area. This is not exact, from aerial photographs that we provided staff. It was a pole storage area. The graves 230, 228, 226, 224. There's a ravine over here going down at 210. There's a ravine here. We're at 230 and 234 at high point. Water is not going from here up there and down there. We have ledge that is in the surface area, but also deep. That's in this mound, ledge that was in this mound over here. So most likely the groundwater discharges into these ravines, which is 200 feet away. So again, it's up to the board, but we're not doing anything in the groundwater. We're uphill and nobody's going to take water out of the site. So that's why we didn't do a hydrologic study. I think the 100-foot buffer from the stream, we presented slides that show that the city has determined that this is a general development district where you can set back your buildings 25 feet from the stream. And the area between 25 feet and 75 feet can be developed with 70% impervious area. So how do you maintain habitat when you're allowing on your ordinance as a matter of right, you're allowing us to go within 25 feet of the stream? We kept 25, as DEP said, 25 to 130 feet of buffer with the trees. And we are only proposing to do, I got so many pieces of paper here, I don't know if I can find it all here. We're proposing to do 4.01 acres of impervious area and we're leaving 66% of the site green, open. So we're not intensely developing this under your standards. We could go to 70%, 70% impervious area under your standards in that district. Can't find the right note I want. I'm sorry. So again, we are trying to meet the environmental standards. We are trying to get a density that makes the project viable. We used the cost as one of our arguments, but under the wetland impact rules that she was looking at, she can't use cost. You can't alter wetlands because the costs be more. You don't get permission to alter wetlands unless you minimize those impacts. Our impacts are related to access to the site, which we can't access site unless we go across the wetland and through the floodplain. And our impacts are fingers of wetland along the fringe that we were proposing to alter. So we're trying to fit the project in to the development standards of the city. Your, your T1 zone allows 75% impervious. We are doing 4.01 acres of impervious area, buildings and pavement, which is 36.6% of the site. We could do 75. That's what your ordinance allows. We got 6.89 acres of open space and your ones, or that leaves 63%. And under the T5 zone, I think we only need 5% open. Again, we're trying to meet the standards, make it cost-effective so that the developer gets the billing type he needs and the number of units he needs to make the project cost-effective. I think you have a letter from Savage that indicates, I think it was one of the things that came up earlier, that indicates that they have no problems with the proposed Brickyard Carmen's project as it relates to their business and safety program. They meet all of the, it goes on to say that they meet all of the state standards and they routinely report. And yes, there's 101 spills that they reported, but that to me shows that you have a company that's concerned. They're reporting spills of two ounces. You know, 76 of those spills were under five gallons and some of those spills were up higher to 600 gallons. There is paperwork to document and DEP used the Savage's documentation on all but three site visits that they did, one prior, it's discovering something, and two after to make sure the cleanup was done in accordance with the way it needed to be cleaned up. Some of the spills were into containment areas, if you rate them all, which I did. So my point is that there is contamination on Savage. Our site is higher. We have bedrock and very stiff soils according to our test bits, not according to the soils map that have been reported here today. But according to our test bits, we have, so that bedrock is going to move that contamination around our site, in my, in my opinion, based on the stuff we've done in the past. I think I can answer any more or any other questions. I think Mike did have a comment that he'd like to make on one of the comments that was made and we'll answer any other questions you might want us to answer.
Go ahead, Mike.
I was just going to, I guess, provide my professional knowledge on a couple items that came up. So the difference between a 30-millimeter and a 10-millimeter liner, 30-millimeter is usually used in a wet pond, so where you're holding a large body of water from going into the ground. And in landfill applications where you have, you know, toxic landfill trash that you don't want to leak into the ground. The 10-millimeter liners are used for what we call dry ponds, which is kind of a misnomer, but I mean, it's, it's a hole in the ground that doesn't retain water. So the water comes in and it drains through a filter media or something that cleans it up. And then there's underdrains that allow the water to leave immediately or within 24 to 48 hours. So that it's, it's clean by the time it gets to the liner, for one thing. You're not really trying to keep the water from going into the ground because it has pipes to go out. You're more keeping the groundwater from coming up into your dry pond that if the water from the ground was to get into the dry pond, that would decrease the volume of water that can be stored, which is, you know, we design for a certain volume so that you're not increasing the flow rate from the pre-developed condition to the post-developed condition. And I think that was the argument that was made to DEP at the time, that it was an appropriate application for that size liner and they ultimately agreed with, with that assessment. And then as far as groundwater contamination, we need to do things like hydrologic studies, groundwater analyses when we're doing two things, putting in wells so we're making sure that the groundwater is not contaminated and we're not providing drinking water to people that is contaminated for obvious reasons. And then if we're putting in leach fields to make sure that the, there's adequate separation to the groundwater when, when the leach field is leaching human waste into the ground, that there's adequate separation there so that it's clean before it gets into the groundwater. And you don't want to do that, you know, in proximity to an aquifer, obviously. We're not doing either of those activities on this site. Personally, professionally, I don't think that there's that much relevance as to whether or not the groundwater is contaminated. We're not using it for drinking. We're not discharging any waters into it. And yeah, it's, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I tend, I mean, groundwater does generally follow the contours of the surface, which look like, as Mike was showing, go away from the site. And ledge tends to prevent groundwater from going to a site, but whether it's contaminated or not in the existing condition, our project isn't contributing to groundwater or pulling from groundwater. So I don't know kind of what the, what the point of a study would be. Thanks.
I have a question for staff. On the contaminated site that we know where some spills that potentially contaminated, are there still staff from, it's Savage, Savage, right? Like walking around that site all the time, like without, has mat suits on or whatever? I'm sure they have protective clothing that they wear for regular work, but.
I don't know that we know what they're doing out there.
Correct.
They're clearly monitoring the site. To Mike's point, that's part of the reason why there are so many reports out there. Whether they're good stewards or not, they're reporting their spills when they're occurring.
But there's nothing that indicates that you have any concerns about the workers or employees or anything?
City's perspective, no, we don't, we don't know what's going on out there on a daily basis. They're following whatever best management practices they're supposed to be following, whether it's OSHA standards, DEP standards, they have waste remediation standards, they have air emission standards, they have OSHA standards. So there are other agencies that are regulating their operation.
Okay. You have more?
Well, I had two more things, but while we're still kind of talking about it, that is kind of what my question would be to the last point from the engineers is that even if we were to have a hydrological survey and they found contaminants, that doesn't really impact their plan of the land. And I don't know what we would be citing to prevent them from building, you know, so they find a contaminant. If it's not, if it's already doing best practices and not going in the groundwater and they're not taking water out of it, what will we be, what would that contaminant that was potentially found prevent us from approving?
I think I would have a concern about the safety of the people living there if there were fluorinated carbons in the soil. if there were fluorinated carbons in the soil. I mean, there are lots of places in Maine where the state recommends that if you shoot a deer, you don't eat it because the deer has been eating grass that contains forever chemicals. These forever chemicals get into the soil and it has long-term health impacts. And I think that one of our duties is to consider health and safety of people. And I would hate to see ninety-six units filled with people who are going to have long-term health effects because we have no idea whether there's any contaminations in the soil.
I'm not, I have my own concerns with this too. What in the, what part of under subdivision review or site plan review would, would having contaminants existing on the ground where people live prevent us from approving it?
Section thirty dash thirteen oh four says that a written denial of the application stating the reasons for such denial upon a finding that skipping down to B, the bulk location or operation of proposed buildings and structures will be detrimental and adversely affect the use and values of existing development in the neighborhood or the health or safety of persons residing or working therein.
Thanks. Wait, well, I had the, I had the other, one other thing that was raised by the public that I had a question about, the NOAA grant for the dam removal. Does that, does staff know that dam removal is imminent at all? Because I imagine that would change the floodplain and those measurements.
I don't know a lot. Our Public Services Director Cousins has been really the one directing that application and everything. But I am aware that they have gone out to bid to start doing, I think it's the preliminary. Oh, is that different? Oh, never mind. I don't know what I'm talking about.
Nor do I. I guess the easy answer is we don't have an update for you. There, I think there has been discussion. Eric Cousins did mention something about some studies being done on Taylor Brook. I don't know how it impacts the dam. I think the dam we're talking about is on Linet Avenue there by DAGs. With that area there, I have no idea where that is as far as removal or anything like that. I don't know that there's any confusion, but just to put it out there, the city is involved in the removal of the dam on the Little Andro, the Little Field Dam. Totally different things and that, the public may know that as well, but just to make that note.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, um, gotta make sure I'm holding this thing. So just a comment, just a conversation of the board. I did notice that we had the applicant come back after we voted to close the public hearing. I don't know what the policy of the board is with that, but I feel like the public should have. Okay, I said that we had the applicant come back after the public had the, we voted to close the public hearing. So I don't know what the policy around that is, but I feel like the public should have the last word on any project that we have. But that's, I think we might need to go back to our policies around that.
Procedure is typically that the applicant, I'm sorry, the staff will open it, or well, planning board will open it. Staff will speak on the project, the applicant will come up, public hear, the public will have an opportunity to. And then based on comments that are given during the public comment, the applicant has an opportunity to make other comments on top of that or staff does, depending on the will of the planning board.
Right, okay. Yeah, it just wasn't clear. I feel like we'd have meetings all night. If that was the case, if they rebutted every single thing and we went back and forth, back and forth, public developer. But anyway, so I had one particular thing that was mentioned earlier. I think David, you had read the five point one, the Downtown Traditional Center. And one of the key features of it earlier today was a vibrant and active interaction between public-private realms. And that sort of stuck out to me simply due to the fact that we had a conversation last month about one particular part of the project, which was the sidewalk. The sidewalk that would connect from the development to Brickyard Lane. And the fact that, you know, there wasn't much incentive or good faith on behalf of the development to either extend that either to Washington Street or further down Brick Lane where it could be utilized by the public. And so that really is a sticking point for me, as well as some of the other concerns about water quality, the natural spring that is already existing in the area. And so, you know, just as a discussion of the board, I feel like those things should be considered. And so I would feel comfortable voting to approve this project today without some stipulations around those concerns.
I think you can address the sidewalk one, right? Because that, that, he had mentioned the sidewalk. It is, it will extend all the way to Washington Street.
Correct.
Okay, is that?
There's walkways, you know, around the parking lot itself as well. So I think the public's comment was being more critical of why are we putting a sidewalk out there to begin with? Is that a pedestrian fare in the area? Is that a spot that we want to encourage pedestrians? Vision wise, long-term vision? Yes, we do. Is that going to happen in the next five years? Maybe not. But the city has an ordinance where developers are asked or requested sidewalks and thought that eventually there will be some connectivity. I think you mentioned that in the last meeting, you have funding to pedestrian rail. We are following the old rail to Washington Street. In an ideal world, yes, there will be next year from this development downtown Auburn. You've got to get across Washington Street. I think everyone recognizes that's, that's far from ideal whether you're pedestrian or vehicle out there today. But we also heard today that there's a traffic study being done for Minet Avenue now. And again, it's a study, so it'll be done probably, I think the plan is to wrap that up in the winter, in the spring. Then it needs to be funded and implemented. None of these things, things are going to happen immediately. A recognition that something needs to change out there on Washington Street, for existing traffic and pedestrian.
And that's the purview of the Transportation Director, who has outlaid plans like that pretty, many times at council meetings and in front of us once, I believe. Mr. Labonte?
Yeah, as far as the, you know, having these studies completed. That's, the city does these studies in hopes of coming up with some findings so we can support capital improvements later to support development. Whether it's to fix the traffic flow, build capacity, or address bike, pedestrian. All those things have to be factored in.
It has to start somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, none of this is, I think Mike mentioned on the site visit today that right-of-way from Washington is two hundred and fifty feet wide. Whenever they built Washington, they were thinking back then, you know, that was going to be a four-lane road. Doesn't happen. Doesn't mean it won't happen.
Moving towards discussion amongst the board or? Do you have any more questions for the, anyone, I don't want to jump ahead. Does anyone have any more questions?
Take it away.
Seems like, sorry.
I guess I'd like to understand better the reason for the sidewalk. Whose idea was it that a sidewalk should be constructed there? I drove down that road now twice. It plainly needs to be, if not paved, perhaps even rebuilt, especially with the amount of traffic that this development is going to add to it. And that's just going to be a burden for the city, isn't it? I mean, when you have your department head meetings, is it the Public Service Department that checked that box and said everything's okay? And does that simply mean that, yeah, there's a road in the vicinity that people can drive on? Because I for one have had two blown tires with pottles in the last twelve months. And I would hate to see that this road is yet another burden for the city to have to improve almost immediately because ninety-six new dwellings exist at the end of it.
We did speak with the Engineering Department and Brickyard Circle is on the list for reconstruction, I believe. It's not in their next, like, two-year cycle, but they did say with an upcoming approval like this, they would wait until after the construction period. So any, you know, further decon, you know, further problems with the road, that they'd be able to do that reconstruction afterwards to fix it up.
Is it, is it within our wheelhouse to have the developer contribute to the construction or reconstruction of the road as opposed to, or in addition to the sidewalk that they're prepared to build?
If they weren't to build the sidewalk, the city would collect what we call fee in lieu, which is established by our Engineering Department, which would go towards the sidewalk fund. So, not exactly. That's kind of two different pools of money.
Do we have any experience with developments that are proposed and approved on roads, public roads that are plainly inadequate? And asking the developer to contribute to the improvement of the access roads?
Not in my six-month year has that happened yet.
Not that I'm aware of. And I think if we were, one, I think we'd need to have a policy to do that. I'm not aware of us having a policy. And if it was a policy, it might be something like an impact fee, where we would have, you know, similar to the in lieu fund to collect that. I think in this case, Public Works would probably put off doing any type of improvements out there, only knowing that there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment out there, you know, should the project get approved. It wouldn't make sense for us to go out there and resurface this road only for it to get beat up. I know they'll do that with subdivisions as well, where they potentially just have the road sort of binder down without the final code on it because they know there's going to be concrete trucks and contractors going in and out of there. And then they'll finally put the final code on it at the end of the project. But to answer your question, no, I don't believe we have a policy to that. And if I can, I did text Mr. Cousins about the dam. And he just responded to me that the grant was for this path. Possibility on Taylor Brook, but not the removal of the dam.
Thanks. So if we're going to move to discussion, and forgive me, I forgot the section that you cited. I, because of what Maureen pointed out earlier with the safety of inhabitants, I would be most comfortable asking for a hydrological survey before approval. And I don't know that we could write that into a, I think it would be something we'd have to come back and meet about so that we could, if there was contaminants, make a determination as to whether they were dangerous or not.
So we were, I believe, directed last year where if there was the potential for a denial, to go down through that section sixty thirteen oh four, all the nine provisions for denial, like Maureen stated, the part B on that one. I don't believe we've done that yet. So I'm not sure on the procedure for that. Would we have to have a motion for each one for people to vote on?
Actually, you would go through each one of these criteria, make a finding as to whether or not the applicant has met them. And tally it up. And it can get interesting.
Yeah.
Because depending on how the outcome works, each one of you could potentially vote against something.
Correct.
But it could pass if it's entirely.
Right.
So if that's the direction of the board and to your point, ideally that would happen because the applicant would want to know why their project is getting. Ideally, that would provide the applicant the ability potentially to come back. From my perspective, I always looked at it as though it's rare that a project should not be passed unless somebody does not clearly meet the requirements. So maybe to Riley's point, if the applicant is so inclined, they have that study done and whatever the findings are, they are. So if it finds that it is truly contaminated out there and that's something that satisfies the board, all the more reason potentially to support Maureen's reference to section B there. So I think you guys could certainly go through each of the criteria and vote upon them. You could potentially, I suppose you could postpone it again and request that additional information be provided to satisfy that criteria.
Mr. Chairman? I think that, I think we're not at the point of voting on whether, I don't think we should be going through the list of each of the individual criteria yet. I think as a board, perhaps, you ought to vote on whether we would like to ask that the applicant have a hydrogeologic study done. And if we vote that we would like to ask the applicant to do that and the applicant can signal that he's prepared to do it and he can, or he can say he's not. And if he's not, then we'll move to our vote on the project itself. But if he is, then I guess we would wait for that study to come back and reconvene and then vote on whether we think that study's a worthwhile document.
I, I would agree with that. And I would ask, I'm not sure of the full scope of a hydrogeologic survey, but I would like to have a soils analysis along with that to see if there are any contaminants in the soil. Just to be clear, regardless of that, I still think that this fails to meet section sixty dash thirteen fifty-nine one, that it won't result in undue water pollution due to the lack of a vegetative buffer. But I think that is a good step towards getting us there.
To Ed's point as well, that just provides the applicant the ability, right, to decide whether or not to move forward versus if the project was denied for that criteria without giving them the opportunity to even address it. So I think the suggestion's not a bad one because it does put it back in their court to decide whether or not to move forward. They could decide in the next few weeks if it's not worth it and the project's down on their own terms.
So I would seek a motion to, to what Bob said, Ed said. And then afterward, it would be postponed until?
They provide that.
They provide that information?
I'm not sure if there's some specific language or something Maureen that you'd like to, you know, consider in that motion.
Sure.
That's putting you on the spot.
No, I would make a motion that the board request the applicant provide a hydrogeological study that includes an analysis of any potential soil contaminants on the site and that the board postpone a vote until such time that's received.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is the hydrogeological study only going to be focused on the soil or will it also impact like water quality?
I'd probably look at both.
Like the Brook water quality?
Taylor Brook and like.
Oh, sorry, then, no, it would just be the site.
Yeah, the site, that's what I mean. Yeah, what I'm more concerned about is like the groundwater, all of that runoff, things that can come from Brickyard Lane into the development.
I was whispering in my background there. But I think Mike is right. You're potentially looking at two different studies there as far as one's dealing with the hydrological water flow out there and one's dealing with soils out there. So if there's both are a concern, that might be something you both want to consider.
Doing two different motions?
I don't know if it needs to be two different motions necessarily.
Leave it the way it was worded or add to it? Amend it?
Certainly add to it. I just want to make sure it's, the board's clear as to what they think they're getting.
Yeah, I think Maureen, like hydro and geological, if that's what you meant. I think that's also what I'm comfortable with. think that's also what I'm comfortable with, hydro and geological.
So we have a motion that was seconded, so we'd have to make an amendment to it?
It can be a friendly amendment.
Or denied and then redone, or?
I would make, like to make a friendly amendment to Maureen's motion that the study, the studies, there'd be two studies, one on soils and one on groundwater.
I'll second that.
Any discussion about the amendment? So, all those in favor of the amendment? It would be you four. Okay, so, that's six to one? Okay. And any more discussion on the first motion, including the amendment, which will be attached to it? Okay, so, all those in favor of the survey motion? And opposed? So the motion passes five to two for the survey? So now I need a motion to postpone.
I think...
Oh, right.
I want to invite the applicant back up to see if they're willing before you... Your prerogative.
Okay. Mike, would you like to come up and address that? You don't have to.
Plan's not here.
So I think for the benefit of the public that's here, given that it's postponed until we receive a notice, typically, we don't do another notice, right, because it's postponed, you're here at this meeting, you're aware of what's going on, but I think in this case, we'll probably have to do a notice again, I would think.
Yeah, I would say maybe we postpone with an update given to the board at the next meeting. Like, like the applicant's...
Right, is that sufficient time? Or just it would be an update saying we don't have an update yet, or we don't have a survey?
Well, I think the update would be, are they going to go forward with this or not?
I think that's, that's fair. These studies could take a year. Okay? And it costs tens of thousands of dollars. So it's not something that's going to happen. But I would like to have 30 days to be able to talk it over with the client and decide how we want to react and get back to the board as to whether the project's moving forward with the studies or it's terminated. If that's possible. Is that fair?
I was just saying that you could postpone it to the next meeting for an update, or you can postpone it definitely.
Well, yeah, the motion was to postpone until a report is provided, so I think to Natalie's point, we could provide an update from, from Mike as to whether or not they're going to pursue it or not. I think also, if it was a year from now, or even if it's a couple of months, what we'll do, where I was going with this was we'll notify the public, just given how engaged they are at this point here. We typically don't do that, but we'll do it in this case, just because it's probably going to be some time that laps, it laps between tonight and whenever it comes back. That was more for the public's benefit. So they, you know, when's this coming back? You'll get mail from us.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we postpone further discussion of this matter until we receive a report from the planning department or the developer regarding the production of a hydrogeologic study.
That allows for proper time to notice abutters.
That allows for proper time to give notice to abutters.
Second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, so. Seven zero. So before we get to item number four, I'd like to invite Mr. DeRoche back up to the, the board and resume his full member status, full voting status, and I will, what's the word I was supposed to use? You had a better word than that before. I would like to invite Mr. Baer back to his associate member status to contribute but not vote. We had a good word for that that was talked about two hours ago. So, item four, this is an extension request for the Westshore Village at Adamean Drive. Again, staff, could you tell us a little bit more about the reasons for this?
Yes, the project was granted approval in 2024. The city ordinance only allows for one-year extensions, sorry, one-year approvals on projects where they can come back for an extension in front of the board. The ordinance just requires that they give a reason for asking for the extension. This case, the applicant has been working with the neighboring property to look at shared grading and utility infrastructure, and they have an intent to begin construction in the fall of this year. So they're asking for, they're asking for the extension request. I don't have much more to add than that.
Any questions for staff? This isn't a public comment one, right, because it's not a...
There'd be no public comment on it.
Right.
I have a question. Do we know what the developer plans to do? Is it going to be market rate housing, portable housing, workforce housing?
They're market rate housing, houses, apartments.
Okay, I'll seek a motion then to...
I move to approve the request for a one-year extension of the site plan approved for Westshore Village at Adamean, Adamean Drive, as originally approved on July 19th, 2024. This extension is granted pursuant to section 60-1308 of the Auburn zoning ordinance, and the revised expiration date shall be July 19th, 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And, item number five is a site plan review submitted by Teradyne Consultants LLC on behalf of Timothy Millet. This is the Danville Corner Road.
I did not submit any materials in your package this month about this one. The project has not moved forward since the last submission you saw a few months ago. I have, the applicant has asked for another extension. Just looking for a motion to postpone it to the next monthly thing.
Any questions?
Is this the second postponement?
This has been postponed since January for various reasons, but...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as there's no discussion? I'll seek a motion.
Motion to post...
Oh, wait, we didn't open the, did I need to open public con, I mean, the hearing? It's not a hearing at all, right? It's just a paper. Right, okay.
And our June 10th would be your state's turn.
Okay, so I move, it's my first time doing this, so if I mess up. So I move to postpone the site plan review of Danville Corner Housing Development until the next planning board meeting may start in June 10th, 2025?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. I just have a few comments about this. This project's been postponed several times due to issues with definitions and descriptions in our ordinance that create confusion. It was certainly bantered, not bantered, that's the bad word. Just discussed at length, and our due diligence determined that it, our language didn't, it didn't fit. We couldn't make it fit within the current zone that it's in, or pretty much any zone that I could find. This is a new type of project, and it's clear that our current ordinance language isn't adequate to address it. Part of our job as the planning board is to propose changes to the code of ordinance when needed. I think the confusion around terms, definitions, and application, applicable requirements regarding this project highlight a need to propose changes to create clarity within the ordinance, because nobody could answer the question the first time we asked this. You know, it was, I don't know, kind of a thing in there. So, I can make a motion, or somebody else can make a motion to this effect. I have some good language that I practiced quite a bit. Is everybody comfortable with me making the motion? It's not usual. Well, I just, I've, it's, I've talked to staff about this a little bit, and I'm just, I want to go through with it. I make a motion that we direct staff to develop draft ordinance language changes that can address issues related to defi, defining housing types and regulations raised during our review process, and that the draft language be presented to us at our next meeting for possible formal initiation of a zoning ordinance change by the board.
Is that enough time for staff?
Maybe, and maybe only because the mayor has expressed similar concerns to what Paul just said. I wasn't here for the beginning of when this project was initially prepared and presented and whatnot, but it seems as though that there's sentiment amongst many people that there should have been a way to approve the project, that people thought it was a good project, and that you shouldn't just approve it because you feel good about it, type thing, that what the ordinance was an impediment to it. So, I believe that at the next council meeting, there may be the language that's going to actually attempt to address some of this concern. And the direction would be for that ordinance to then be sent to you folks to make a recommendation back to the council. I don't know that it's going to address specifically what maybe you're thinking of, Paul, but it has this project in mind as well as others that could potentially be impacted in the general development district, which uses the multifamily standard, multifamily district?
Multifamily suburban.
Multifamily, thank you. Multifamily suburban district, that's where you go for the density requirements. So there's some discussion about that. So to answer your question, Riley, I might have language for you folks at the next meeting because of what the council might actually be looking to. So there, there could be some convenience out of what you folks are potentially looking to do.
What that proposed amendment that will be going to council soon doesn't have, though, is edits to definitions. So if that's something that you would really like to look at, I think it would be helpful to staff to know which definitions you're a little, like, more interested in having better defined.
And, and I'll, I'll say too, I'm all for cleaning up the ordinance. It's easy for Natalie and I, being relatively new, to be critical of how things have been interpreted and looking at it maybe differently. At the same time, we are going to be doing a comprehensive plan, which I'll remind you all, fill out the survey, you got a couple more weeks to fill out the survey. So if we're, if we're talking about substantive changes, I'm not sure now is the best time. Not that I want to keep progress from occurring. If it's housekeeping, if it's things that make sense, I don't know what that means without seeing it, but if it makes sense, then it's probably going to gain traction with you folks in the council. But if it's something bigger, like, is the zone of Brickyard Circle appropriate, now's not the time to have that discussion. That's, that's a comprehensive, comprehensive plan discussion. I think Natalie's spot on. If there's additional things that you want to look at beyond housing types and involves definitions, it would be good to have some guidance. And I'll say too, kind of roll here, if you want, you could always look at the language that gets presented to the council. Maybe that addresses the concerns. If it doesn't, great, then we can potentially work on additional language initiated by you folks instead of the council. That's if the council even initiates anything.
Hang on, Paul, hang on, Paul. Actually, I'd like to second...
Okay, thank you.
No, for discussion, I'd like to second the motion, follow that up. I appreciate that because we are a planning board, and I think that, from my experience, for, for quite a few years now, planning board hasn't taken an initiative for truly planning. We've reacted more from direction from above. So I think that, you know, if we're going to serve as a planning board and we have to, you know, deal with what's there, from time to time, yeah, we should review what we're working with and make our own suggestions too, and not always be directed from above. Because I think that, you know, we've been selected to sit on this board because we may be bringing a different perspective than those voted upon by the public to sit above and direct down.
So I, I did talk about this, I believe it was three months ago at the February meeting, because it kind of got, I think that's the one where we had the extensive discussions about it. And it kind of got put off, but I, it's just sitting here, waiting for something to happen, and I don't want to wait any longer. So if this needs to come back to like a workshop in June with some, something for us to play around with, and you'll have direction from council as well, I, I think that's, just to get this ball, the raw rolling, it is what it is. This doesn't seem like a big change to language. It seems like some, just a few definitions that need to be changed to make this type of a project, and whatever else developers can creatively come up with to fit in there, because the, I, I haven't found anybody that doesn't like this type of an idea, and it makes sense. And I don't mean it for just this one, but other things could happen if we open up that flexibility. And we still have then control over whether or not we approve them, but...
To Natalie's point, though, did you want to amend your motion at all to include any specific definitions? Or?
I do not have any specific definitions in mind.
I think then probably best way forward is, assuming council presents, a council's initiative, comes back to go to planning board next month, we'll give that to the board, and we can start there, and then if there's more that we need in the definition section or other places, we can work off of that.
And I do believe the limiting factor in this particular one was the four units per acre. acre with single-family homes, correct?
I can tell you, I mean, in the discussions I've had, that's exactly what the fix is, is looking at the density and coming up. Without getting into it, if the board remembers the density varied from four units to seventeen units per acre, and the discussion has been, if you can do seventeen units out there, does it really matter what the housing type is? Single families, could it be seventeen units in one multifamily building? So I think that's going to be the discussion that's held at the council level. If it gets initiated, great, it comes back to you.
Yeah, and there's, I, I know this area isn't within the city proper, if you will, but it's now being, the zone's been extended out with the comprehensive plan, anyway. Not that the T four one kind of thing, or two B, that kind of thing, but there's plenty of areas that already have way more than seventeen in an acre, where people are living happily with some, some yard space, and if you will, and open space and things like that.
Again, I think to Riley's point, could we turn something around? I think we're going to turn something around because we'll have something drafted for the council that's initiated. If they don't initiate it or not, we can still bring that same version to you folks and start the discussion.
To, to add real quick, I know we still need to vote on Paul's motion, but before I forget, when you asked about additional terms or definitions that come to mind, I know recently we've talked about ADUs, and when Mr. Trask was still on the board, we seemed to have trouble defining what Auburn wanted to determine was an ADU percentage to size of the main home. I don't know if that was ever resolved, I think that's something we probably want to discuss and define. And also the Conex box topic, that seemed to die, but people were like, well, what's a Conex box? I think we need to have those definitions clarified as well.
So the board did send forward a recommendation to council that got approved under the ADUs. We defined ADU, but we also put a fifteen hundred square foot limitation on them. As for Conex boxes, that will be going back to council soon. We sent, the planning board sent forward their recommendation, council had a workshop on it and decided to, table's probably not the best word, postpone it to a future meeting, and I have heard that it is coming back, I don't know at this next meeting, but definitely in one of the next couple meetings, as it is a concern, not only of the planning board, but of members of the public.
Thank you, Natalie.
Anything else relevant to this particular motion?
Other than I think, as you mentioned, the guys, Natalie, I, I mean, you probably maybe already see the council there, but if you don't, or even if you do, we can forward it to you, because you might have one or both of those items on there, so just get aware of it ahead of time.
Okay. All those in favor? That looks unanimous to me. Yeah, it was, Bob. The one I interrupted. Okay, we get to move on, it's eight thirty, isn't it?
Comments?
So public comment, I'm opening public comment. I'm closing public comment. Miscellaneous items like Conex boxes?
Yes. Upcoming agenda items, we have no project coming next month beside, no new project, other than you'll have Danville on your agenda again, and the workshop on the proposed changes.
I'll add, related but unrelated, the woman behind the door, Jackie Sawyer, tomorrow's her last day with us. Going to Lewis. Not happy about it. So, Peter Fairwell will say thanks, goodbye, and all that, she's only been here, you know, three months with her, but she's made. We'll be advertising that you want to come work with me, Natalie, she's hosting something shortly, but tomorrow's Jackie's last day.
Also, it's your birthday today, correct?
Happy birthday! That's funny. Well, thank you, Jackie. We, we do kind of refer to as the Wizard of Oz behind the scenes there with, and she does fifteen thousand other things. She just shows up when I'm like, how come Jackie's telling us about that? She wore a lot of hats. Okay, I'll seek a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, everyone.